We'll let Nick.
Okay, I did have copies of seven councilmen and a mayor, is that correct?
Six councilmen and a mayor, but we've got some people going.
I have eight copies of this. We had a screen three or four minutes ago.
Okay, let me get us chimed in here.
It's America.
Want to do those first since we've got three of them, or you want to do agenda first? What's council want to do?
Well, next it says approval of the agenda.
Okay, let's go through the agenda.
Move to approve.
Any discussion? Motion, Mr. Pennell.
You have an addition?
I believe I was either confused or something, or I attempted to clarify things on the agenda. Item seven and eight under unfinished shows that eight is to be postponed until September the first, and I believe the intent was, or should be, to follow the same as the new accounting software for February. I don't see any real reason or purpose in having seven until we have eight.
So you want to postpone it also?
If that's amiable with the people that posted.
Any further discussion? Okay, motion made to postpone. I guess you better get seconded. Motion made to postpone the operations manual for the finance department until September the first to go along with the new accounting software. Is that correct, sir? Is that issue motion? Okay. All right, this made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any further? Okay, no further discussion? Next on the agenda will be approval of the minutes.
I think for the minutes of August 4th.
Okay.
Second.
Discussion? Okay, I have one issue with the, uh, with the minutes. That was under the discussion of the vehicle when some references were made to malfeasance and grand theft. Those are not reflected in here, and they should be.
Malfeasance in what?
Grand theft on the part of the mayor's office. That should be reflected. Also, Ms. Balance's apology in the, her comments was not reflected also, and it should be.
Also intent?
That would be in council comments.
And please note that I didn't apologize for the content, only for the...
Okay, man, we can't hear what you're discussing.
I did, I want to, if you're going to change that, I want to, in the record that I did not apologize for the content, I only apologized for the delivery.
Awesome, okay. As long as we're straight, as long as we get it reflected. Any further?
Yes, I'd prefer not to approve this until I see the changes in writing, so if we might postpone this until the next meeting?
What's the council say? Motion's been made to postpone until next meeting.
I have the motion on the floor.
Okay. Motion made and seconded to approve. All in favor, say aye.
No.
Okay, just one vote, Mr. FPL, I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said. Yes.
Okay, I'm not clear.
Okay, there was apparently a motion on the floor to approve.
Right.
As they are, without the amendments. Is that correct, sir? Or with the amendments?
As amended.
As amended, okay. It was a three to two, or three to one vote to approve as amended.
Talking about the minutes now.
This.
The August 4th minutes. And that was with the references to and Ms. Balance's apology for the behavior, not the content.
So the vote is for the amended minutes?
Yes, that is correct.
And...
I voted no, not to approve it until I saw the final draft.
Okay, so three to one, motion carries?
Three to one motion carries?
Three to one.
Well, that's not a majority.
Okay, Mr. Pennell.
Number one, you would have to vote or not vote to get them approved. Secondly, in most cases where there's corrections, we need to get them anyway after the meetings for the record, which I would hope would alleviate Ms. Balance's concerns because we can still challenge minutes at any meeting that we want to. So I request that we get copies of the corrected minutes prior to the next meeting.
Okay, that is the one, what occurs, is my understanding. So go back again and vote.
Yes.
Yes? Barry, Mr. FPL, yes? Ms. Balance, no?
No.
Okay. So I need to break that tie?
Is this, is this...
Yes.
What does it take? Does it take a majority of the council, sitting council people? Or is, is, because I know in some instances, the mayor is not allowed to vote because he is not a council member, he is the mayor.
He is only restricted from voting when he is specifically statutorily not allowed to vote. He is allowed to vote statutorily on anything else that requires his vote to approve.
What are the, what are the specific instances?
I don't have a complete list, but approval of minutes, I do not believe is on that list.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so these minutes are approved with the amendments. All right, next will be the special meeting minutes for the July 26th and August 22nd. So we'll start with 26th? Yeah, we'll start with the 26th. That will be the purchase of lawnmower, I was not here.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve, second?
Second.
Made and seconded, any discussion?
State or readdressing.
July 26th, sir.
Special meeting.
Made and seconded. Okay, motion made and seconded, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried, minutes for July 26th approved. Special meeting minutes for August the 2nd on the cell phone tower. Motion to discuss, motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Second.
Made and seconded, any additions or deletions? Ms. Balance's comments to Mr. Hayes as far as infecting her was not recorded in here, and Mr. Hayes's resentment to that statement is not reflected in here.
I want to address that. There's no way I can put every single comment everyone makes, and I have to, at some point, make a decision about what presents the larger view. And I personally do not feel it's appropriate to put in demeaning comments towards me or towards other people. I personally feel like it's in extremely poor taste, and I will do so only under duress.
Okay, in section, in discussion, under, Mr. Berry recalled the CUPN certificate of appropriateness, he also asked about the length of the time for which the government permitted valid. Mr. Hayes' response was, once we were told, we're the federal government, you can go ahead and build that tower, and that's it. Is that not the same thing?
That's a statement, that's not overt rudeness.
It's a matter of the minutes, a matter of record.
Well, at some point, I have to, I have to make a decision through each conversation, through each discussion.
Okay.
And I think it's really extremely inappropriate to write the comments that are made at this table that are extremely rude. I am very uncomfortable doing that.
So noted, Mr. Pennell?
There is, in defense of that, there is an article that I just read, and I can't remember if it was in the town or city, or it was in, that was probably the only place it was at, that the recording of minutes that is not designed to cover each and every discussion is to cover the major points and key issues of meetings that are conducted.
Yes.
I remember the last council adamantly opposing or wanting a comment on one of the council members in the minutes, and it was a joking comment, which was basically a waste of time, in my opinion, and would go along with the article, and if so be, I can, I can re-research it, but I think we get a little carried away on our minutes the way it is.
So what's the decision?
It's my call, with all due respect.
But your call to reflect what's said?
It is my call, my call to appropriately report what occurred at the meeting. You're correct, I do put in more quotes than the process requires. I would prefer to go forward from here putting in fewer quotes rather than mean quotes.
I would prefer mean quotes not to be made.
That would be ideal.
Yes, it would.
I think the key thing is that our attendant numbers and our minutes match up to the point that we can at least historically go back and see what was decided on that issue, and if there was a lengthy discussion and it basically ended up in a six-zero, I don't see a reason to have six paragraphs regarding a discussion, you know, when it, when it ends up being six-zero, but I agree, you know, hopefully we can get to the point where there won't be any bad comments and we can record praises.
Robert's rules of order state we're just supposed to talk about the facts, not make personal comments or have personal incentives here. So, we either reflect them or we don't. Mr. Berry?
In reference to that, I think it's very important, especially in regards to these minutes, one of the problems that we got into, we being the city council, I think one of the reasons we got beat on this cell tower issue was we didn't have adequate minutes involved to show to the court. So we have to be careful when we come up to certain things to make sure that the minutes do adequately reflect all elements of the discussion, I guess is what I should say.
I totally agree that the comments, some of the comments that are made here at this table, and if I'm one of them, I apologize for it, but some of it is just uncalled for. It has nothing to do with your personal agenda or personal feelings about the thing, it's what's in front of you on the table as a business. So as a target and as a person who has to listen to stuff and try to run this thing like it needs to be done, it becomes a little hamper. So if we can have less of it, then I'm all for it.
Well, I will put those things in that you requested, but I hope that you've never asked me to do that again because I will have to tell you.
Well, if they're not made again, then I won't have a problem with it.
Well, still, what goes in the minutes ultimately is my duty, and when someone tries to tell me what to put in it and what to not put in it, I have to just say, with all due respect...
So noted.
Okay.
Let's move on.
All right.
We're going to vote on this?
Yeah.
Yep. All in favor?
Aye.
No.
Abstain, I wasn't here.
That's two no votes.
So two, one, one, and so we're not accepting the minutes for August 2nd?
Apparently not, not enough to vote for.
I move to approve the minutes as written from the meeting of August 2nd.
Motion made, do you have a second?
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded to approve as written without any amendments. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, abstain.
Okay, fee was one abstain. Yes. As long as we hold the comments down. All right, with all the minutes approved, next we'll go on to commission committee authority reports and vacancies. They have nothing under planning under CAPC. We go to Mr. Charles Rexdale, who is present out in the lobby. Mr. Rexdale, would you come in here, sir? I think we're on the mic. Mr. Pennell?
Motion to discuss.
Yes, sir.
Second.
Made and seconded. Go ahead.
I have, I have two questions, and I'm not challenging the validity of the applicant, but at the same time, I realize he was nominated last meeting. As of this morning, I was told I didn't have anything in my box, I got his application this afternoon. I just want to make sure it's still appropriate, that if everybody else got the application at the same time and he was nominated, can we still vote on it? And number two, I'd like to clarify what was in the newspaper about the already seated CAP commissioner at the workshop, which was appropriate, anybody can be at a workshop, but as far as the recently seated, it kind of slaps in the face that CAPC doesn't care whether we vote him in or not.
Okay, so noted. Any further discussion? Hang on, we, we can't let you talk yet. So there again, the vote is on the table. Was you, did you make a motion to discuss? Any further discussion? None? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
All in favor of what?
His nomination, what we're talking about.
I move to discuss. I asked the question if we were having a legal vote, if we just got the application even though he was nominated last time.
I didn't hear any motion to approve.
Okay, let's start, start all over again. Motion to discuss on Mr. Pennell's question about the legal vote, since no one had the application in front of him. Any discussion on that? Is that correct?
I'm, I'm looking for the answer to the left of me.
If you're requesting an opinion, yes, you can vote. The council in the past has voted without even an application in certain instances. You're not required to, but you can.
Yes, sir.
If that comment should be reflected in the minutes, I move to approve Mr. Rexdale for position seven on the CAPC.
Second.
Made and seconded, any further discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstain.
Same? Is that a yes?
Abstain.
Abstain, okay. So yes. I vote yes. Now, sir, you can make.
To answer your question, I did submit the application, I believe, over a month ago now, and I also did try to make clear at the workshop that I, my nomination was still subject to the approval of the council, and I am not certain why the newspaper did say that I was already seated, because I did make clear that I had not been approved by council yet, and that I was looking forward to the vote tonight.
Neither one of those comments were directed against.
I understand, I was just trying to explain, to help hopefully allay any concerns that you might have.
Thank you, Charles, welcome aboard.
Thank you very much. Good luck.
All right. Secondly, uh, there had been a previous nomination of Mr. Robert Walling on the hospital commission.
Move to discuss.
Motion to discuss, second?
Second.
Made and seconded, Mr. Pennell?
Make the motion to approve Mr. Walling for position seven on the hospital commission.
Motion to approve Mr. Walling? Do you have a second? Yes, ma'am.
Having had the opportunity, I haven't been able to get in touch with Mr. Walling, haven't had to talk with him yet, but I see in here when it says, it says up here, address Seven Indian Wells Drive, Holiday Island. It says, how long have you resided in Eureka Springs? Seven years. Come down here, it says, are you a qualified elector? That blank is not filled in at all. It says, do you reside, do you live inside the city limits? Says yes, but it doesn't say which city limits. Does he live in Eureka Springs city limits or Holiday Island city limits? And it says for how long? Seven years. So that kind of befuddled me. I'm not clear if he lives in this city or in another city. I don't know if he's a qualified elector, and if he's lived in Eureka Springs for seven years, but his address is Holiday Island, that just, it doesn't make sense to me. So I wonder, I wonder...
Mr. Pennell?
Mr. Walling here?
I don't think so, sir. Yes, sir.
Well, I know for a fact that this is one of the few commissions that you don't have to live within the city. I think that maybe the application in itself was a little befuddling to him, and he considered living inside the city limits of the district in Holiday Island, and I don't know what the rest of the requirements are for the hospital commission. They have to be electors, but I don't think that we're asking anybody to show their voter registration before.
Not to that with concern.
Another commissioners on the hospital commission who don't make statements.
Right, I don't, I'm not sure, but one or two have lived in the city. I know Indian Wells Drive is not in the city.
That is in Holiday Island.
Yes. If there's a motion on table to approve, second?
It's been seconded.
Yeah. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstain.
Yes.
Present, I will change my vote to present.
Yes, Mr. Walling, give my vote. Thirdly, I am nominating Mr. Ann Gurnell for the parks position number five. You should have the application before you. So for your consideration. Nothing else? None for HDC, we don't have anybody, cemetery none. Ms. Balance, do you have a report on the WESC?
I do.
Motion to discuss. Oh, I guess we don't have any reports.
Second, oh, yeah, right. Um, as I reported the last time, we found in section nine of our agreement for residential and commercial solid waste collection and transfer services, that residential customers shall be required to identify waste collectible pursuant to this agreement with specially marked bags or tags provided by or purchased from the city or the city's designated agent. We don't seem to be having any issue with that. It goes on to say, "Commercial customers shall be required to use containers provided or approved by the authority or approved bags, tags, or containers provided by or purchased from the city or the city's designated agents. The authority shall be required to collect commercial waste only when contained in such bags or containers or designated by such tags." When I've been going around on Monday night to have a look and see if the commercial customers are complying with this, I see there's still a lot of trash set out in black bags by the commercial customers, and the authority is still collecting that. So, so it doesn't seem fair to me that the said, that the residents have to comply with this, but the commercial customers don't. And I know it would probably be a burden for this to be enforced, so I'm wondering where the, why this, why the resident should have to do this when the commercial customers don't, even though it says that everybody shall right here in this contract. So that really bothers me, and, and I'm wondering, I think we need to talk about that at some point and figure out how we can make it equitable for the, for the residents and the commercial customers. Either everybody should have to do it, or nobody should have to do it. It's not fair that the residents have to do it and the commercial, and the commercial customers are supposed to do it, but they're not. That's not fair. Somehow we have to, somehow we have to figure out how to make this fair for everybody. It's not right.
Do you think you're close to the recommendation, coming in with the recommendation?
Well, that's what I'd like to talk about at some point, because like I said, either we need to abolish it for everybody or enforce it so everybody does it.
Mr. Berry?
Where are you reading that at?
This is the agreement for residential, commercial, solid waste collection and transfer services.
Yet, mayor, under our ordinance, which I think is also our law, all it says is that commercial customers will use bags, bundles, private containers, or commercial containers prior to collections. If not using a commercial container, if not using a commercial container, the customer is responsible for placing bags, bundles, or other containers, curb sized, or as close as possible to collection. So it appears that our ordinance, the people are going by our ordinance. If there's a problem with the contract, then that's between, obviously, you and the contractor. But our ordinance states that commercial customers will use bags, bundles, private containers, or commercial containers. If using a commercial container provided by the contractor in an interlocal government aid agreement for disposal of solid waste, customer's responsible. So I think this is a responsibility between the mayor and the solid waste people.
Well, I would just like to point out that when I was, when I brought this up before and I was talking about it, our city attorney said that it was a matter of contract and we had to follow the contract, and this is what the contract says.
We have conflict with our city ordinance.
There's a breakdown in communication somewhere. We, we need to do something about this. If this is what the contract says, this is what the contract says. That's what the ordinance says, that's what the ordinance says. Somewhere we have to come to a, an agreement, a compromise, we have to figure out something because it's not... We have to figure out something, because it's not fair to the residents when it says in the contract that the residents shall do it and the commercial customers shall do it. The residents are doing it, and the commercial customers are not. There's a problem here. We need to talk about it.
And our ordinance says that it's okay.
Well, then, we need to change the contract.
So, then, it seems to be, be to the mayor and the city attorney and solid waste people to work this out.
Mr. Pana, you have something?
I would, I would propose, and I don't necessarily mean this even as a motion, because it's a committee report, that the chair bring a proposed, if it needs to be a proposed change to the ordinance, to bring it in line with the contract, or a proposed meeting with the solid waste to change the contract, let's, let's get them in sync. Just sitting here and saying the contract says one thing, the ordinance says another, we're, we're back to, you know, his ball, my ball.
I think I have a meeting with solid waste, Kear County Solid Waste, later this month. I'm not sure on the date.
If the timing is, is correct, is workable, that at some future, soon scheduled meeting, that a proposal be made at the table.
All right, I'll put that on my due list to contact Kear County Solid Waste and see what we can come up with.
Thank you.
Okay? Want any further? All right, thank you, ma'am. Mr. Levine is here for Parks Report.
Good evening, Mayor, Council.
You need to turn it off?
It'd be kind of nice.
You can just, yes, that's good.
Thank you. The city, through Mr. Brown, obtained a, a grant, an energy savings grant, that had several parts to it. The part that, that most fitted Parks inclusion was a bid on putting up LED lighting. And we were, we put out a bid last Friday, and we got a successful bidder that will allow us to replace eleven of our post top lights that look like this. We've got six in Basin, one in Gad, one in Sweet, two at East Mountain, and then there's one at the corner of Spring and Center. And these will be sixty watt fixtures, replacing a hundred and fifty watt fixtures, so we're going to see an energy saving of around a third. As a bonus, we are going to be able to put up about five of these skirted fixtures that will be completely, no uplighting, and they will be put probably at the top of Planer Hill, and we may be able to retrofit the two in the island at the top of Planer Hill to put those LED. And we also are going to put one here to replace at the corner of Spring and Main. And those fixtures are called Cobra Heads, and they are four hundred watt fixtures, and we hope to be able to replace them with a hundred watt, so we'll have a savings of, we'll have a quarter of the, of the light. So, we're really thrilled about, especially having something as decorative like this at least a few spots in town, and maybe over the many, many years, maybe we can replace them all. But the can lights that are a hundred watt are really not all that unattractive, and they are fairly energy efficient. So, we hope to get started on that, probably be a couple of months for they come in. I had an unusual call from our Parks and Tourism Coordinator, John Benneke. He called me on my cellphone, which was unusual for one, and he started telling me about a grant that they've got from Parks and Tourism that eventually comes out of game and fish funds, and there's a million dollars available, and they will award up to a hundred thousand dollars for certain grants. And he mentioned that we were always good grant folks, and that we always came up with reasonable grant projects, and he felt that Lake Leatherwood would fit perfectly for this grant. And it involves youth wildlife observation, access for hunting and fishing, promotion of economic development and tourism, and he thought all of those things fit Lake Leatherwood perfectly. And he told me if we get a good grant application, that he feels like we'll qualify. So, this will allow us to put in some different wildlife viewing areas, different fishing platforms, plus it will allow us to help repair some of our trails at the south end of the lake with the last few spring events we've had. We've had some mishaps with some of the bridges that have been put in over the past, and I think this will allow us to put in a good sturdy bridge that won't wash out every spring. And so, we're real excited about that, and we feel pretty confident that once our Trails Committee gets put together and we start working on it, we've got till October twenty-eighth. So, that ought to be a good, real feather in our cap.
What was the amount?
It's up to a hundred thousand dollars.
Per grand?
Per grand.
Yeah.
We have a, took a reservation the other day, which was interesting, for a architectural firm out of Tulsa, and I wish I knew the name, as you probably know, Butch, but they have a group of eighty to a hundred people who are coming out, and they've rented all of our cabins, all of our camp spots, all of our RV spots, and they want to have a big company picnic out there. So, that's going to be War Eagle Weekend, that they're coming out. So, we're excited about that. We had a discussion, and I think Alderman Grunell brought up the subject about our, our Parks bonding, about our commissioner bond being insufficient, and he was correct. It appears that our, only our treasurer had a five thousand dollar surety bond on, and it, in the state code, it, it says each commissioner will have a fifty five thousand dollar surety bond, so we have gotten that taken care of as of today. I've got our certified mid-year budget that I'm going to give to the city clerk. It's a kind of a lengthy document, and it takes a lot of copying, so if someone does want a copy of it, I'll see if I can get it to them, otherwise it'll be in the hands of the city clerk for your viewing pleasure. You know, I think that's about it. Are there any questions? Yes, sir.
I have two. First of all, I would like to recommend that each of the aldermen, I'll speak for myself only, I would like a copy of that, because that is required to be presented to us, and I don't think that means just pass it around. The other question on your surety bond correction. Appreciate you calling me back, even though the two people that said they would call me back did not provide me any answers. That is paid for out of park funds, correct?
That's correct. There's not much we don't pay for. Alderman Grunell, we pay for our water, our gas, our electric, we pay for it all, our payroll. Yes, sir.
How many lights did you say were going in the park?
There's eleven total.
And they're going down on the floor part of the park?
In Basin Park, yes. Basin Gad, Spring, and East Mountain.
Oh, they're not all eleven in the park?
No, no, we only have six in the park. And lastly, there was a discussion about our, our ordinance with the tax, and I did go down, there is missing a follow-up ordinance once the initiative was passed in two thousand and six. But I did go get a certified copy of the election results. I felt like that was something that would probably be needed if, if another step has to be taken. And just FYI, the proposed initiative for Parks to have a quarter percent tax had sixty-seven percent of the vote. It was six hundred and twenty-four to three hundred and eight, which is pretty much a landslide around here. Yes, sir.
Point of clarification, since I brought that up at the last meeting, is that in checking all of the ordinances that go back forever and ever that are available online at least, there was no ordinance that renewed the nineteen ninety-eight, I believe.
Nineteen oh six.
Nineteen, whatever it was, it was the ordinance nineteen oh six or eighteen oh six or something like that, that basically would have appeared that there's nothing on the code book, which there isn't, that allows the quarter percent sales use tax to be sent to Parks. That should have been caught, because that has to be put into a separate fund, if I'm understanding correctly. And even though it wasn't codified, an attorney's opinion was obtained, it's still lawful. It's kind of like the, if you leave out a clause in a federal contract that has to be there by law, that's still law anyway, whether you left it out or not. So, the only thing that I'd like to see done, and it's not one of those barn burner things, it's just bringing us up to date like we should be, is that an ordinance be written that codifies the results of the election, and the key to that, for the public to know, is that if they don't remember, is that the old ordinance required Parks to come bef, you know, renew that ordinance every five years. The election was to continue approving the quarter percent sales use tax, as well as doing away with the sunset clause, which means that once it's codified, the results of the election, until such time that there is either an issue or a referendum or whatever, it's just one less tracker that we have in the pile of stuff to, to make sure that Parks goes over five years and gets a new update to the code. It's, it'll be good for, till the citizens want to change it, whether it's five years, ten years, or whatever. Is my understanding.
I'll try and get with Jim on that.
Anything else?
Thank you.
All right. Before we get into public comments, in my hagist, I neglected to ask for an approval in addition to the agenda, Mr. Nick Brown, who has our energy grant, and I apologize for that, but he wants to be added last under new business.
Wants to be last?
Yes, he does.
Oh, okay.
He requested that, is that correct, Nick?
I did indeed, yes, sir.
So, number eight on new business. Mr. Pana?
I move to suspend the rules and add item eight, the energy grant discussion of new business.
Second?
Second.
May I second you? Any discussion on it before we do it?
Please put, I mean, roll call. Parker Raphael?
Yes.
Lenny Balance?
Yes.
Butch Berry?
Yes.
Ken Pana?
Yes.
Zero?
Okay, thank you.
Without delaying the public comments any further, since we're still under commission committee and authority reports and vacancies, one of the two options, can you update us on the two vacant department heads real quick, like, or can we put it on?
Real quick, like, yes, sir. We finished the interviews on the transit people, did the last one this morning. We still don't have any good applicants for the finance director job yet, that's either issues with some stuff that's going on in town, or money, mostly money. So, nobody's willing to do it for what we're going to have to pay them, and stick with it. And that's it. Should have a decision by next council meeting on who I'm going to.
Not a good answer, but thank you.
Yeah. Who else have met for the transit, for the transit director? Anything else? All right, we're going to public comments. First on the list is Charles Ragsdale. Mr. Ragsdale? It may be what he wanted to talk about a while ago. He left, okay. Diane Stoll? Hello, Diane, come on in. Can you get that one up there? Go ahead, cheers.
Okay. Well, I've, I just got a couple of questions here now about this deer hunt.
Name and address, please.
I was under the understanding that the hunt would be carried out by?
Can you give us your name and address?
I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
Diane, Diane Stoll, fifty-five Center Street. That the hunt would be carried out by Fish and Game. I now hear that the, the general public will be doing the hunting, providing they have a hunting license and maybe a few other qualifications, much like we all can drive cars, providing we pass a test. So, in general, the general public drives. I've been told that the hunter cannot chase his target onto unapproved private property or after dark. What are the consequences if someone is going gung ho and doesn't abide by this? How do these hunters know the property lines between the property owners for or against this hunt? And how and who authorized the one-time hunt to turn into a five-day event? What stops you from declaring a year-long hunt? Again, what was the intent of the voters? That's all I have.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Melissa Green? I'm Melissa.
Melissa Green, seventeen Bridge Street. As many of you know, I'm on the HDC. When I was Chair of the HDC, I worked extremely hard, because there was a deer problem population, especially in my neighborhood, and there was a huge problem with neighbors, fighting with neighbors. So, I worked tirelessly to get guidelines and release the regulations on any fencing for, to keep, you know, deer out. I also was instigational in getting my neighbors together with then-Mayor Joy to start an ordinance on deer, the ban on deer feeding. While I do understand that we have a deer problem, I, I understand very definitely, I reluctantly voted for this hunt, and I voted, you know, because I was told, and I know it's my right, or it's my duty as a citizen to be informed, but we were told this was going to be conducted by the Fish and Game. Mr. Page told me today, I can get a license, and I'm from the old school, hey, all grudges are settled during hunting season. This is scary to me. I, I'm going to read the fore one, and, and I, I think it's real ambiguous, and I think it needs to be looked at, because I want all the ducks in a row. If we're going to have this, I, I want this to be what the voters wanted, and I'm not hearing this is what they wanted. For allowing a one-time bow and arrow deer hunt within the corporate city limits of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, according to the regulations promulated, promulgated and timeset by the Arkansas Game and Fish Commissions within the areas prescribed by the Arkansas Game and Fish Commission, in this constitutional authority to regulate the game and fish population anywhere in the state of Arkansas. I don't hear anywhere in this that, and no disrespect intended, that the city council is conducting this deer hunt. I, I was under the impression from the last council and from everything I read in the papers, that this was going to be conducted by the Fish and Game with professional hunters, and, and I'm a little concerned, because most of it's across the street at my neighbors' properties. And like Diane said, if a wounded deer comes on my property, I'm going to give them the right to come kill it, I don't want to see it suffer. But I'm also afraid for my pets. I'm leaving my house and going to one of my rentals for five days, because I'm afraid to be there. I'm afraid for my pets. So, I respectfully ask this council to go over this, make sure your ducks are in the right row, and also, you, you set this hunt for the Christmas festival. You know, is, is that a good time to have a deer hunt, when, when we're having a parade with children here? Should we just give the deer hunters a parade voucher, so they can drive down the street with their kill? I mean, I, I, I think this is untimely. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Jasmine Stanley? Submit to this.
Hi.
How are you? Get to the mic there. Okay, good.
Hey, I'm Jasmine Stanley. I live at 50 Dickey. The word mishap was used earlier, and I believe that's what this whole deer hunt is about, a mishap. I can't imagine killing a lot of deer. I can't imagine that this is the way we're proposing to take care of the problem in this town. I feel very strongly about it. I feel that we need to go a different direction to take care of the problem. I do feel my house would be overrun. I feel like I'd have to close my blinds, leave town. I had no idea this would be five days, that it would be carried out in the way it's carried out. I am, I know it was voted in. I think the vote was misconstrued at the voting polls. I think it's time that we reconsider this. I think it's massive slaughter. It's killing. I'm totally opposed to it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. There's no further public comments? All right. Entering the unfinished business, number one is the FOIA workshop date. And that's mine. Motion discussed?
May I discuss?
Made and seconded? Wait. There was two moves.
I'll second.
Okay. Made and seconded. Sent out an email to Mr. Mark Hayes, early part of this week, Monday or Tuesday. Finally got a response today. He has been in a planning session for Municipal League in Harrison for the last two weeks. He is, he apologized for not responding. He says that he will get back with me next week. He will try to get back with me next week and try to get a date set up for this. So, that's where we're at now.
I'd just like to make one addition. And this doesn't necessarily have to be in the minutes. If anybody read the paper, this is really important. I mean, I believe it was Secretary of State's office hired an attorney. I think they paid a bill of $4,000 or $8,000 to clarify, because they didn't understand the FOIA requirements and it involved dismissal of an employee. So, it's important, even at our level, that we have this and we get as many people in here within the city, the commissions, the county, and anybody else that's willing to come in here. I think even putting out a letter to the Arkansas, Northwest Arkansas Planning Association chapter, wouldn't hurt to allow everybody to know that the Municipal League's going to go to this trouble. I feel like it's a very important issue that can really, really go a long ways in protecting this.
Thanks, sir. Any further? Okay. As soon as he gets hold to me and gives me a concrete date, then I'll...